Okay, good morning. We'll go ahead and call a meeting to order. We have approved our agenda this morning.
Don't move.
Second.
Second.
Any for the discussion? Now, all three say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item two, Betty, minutes from last meeting.
August fifth, twenty twenty four, Chairman Hugable called the regular meeting of the Wright County Board of Supervisors to order at nine a.m. Members present were Cluse, Rasmussen, and Hugable. Motion by Rasmussen seconded by Cluse to approve the tentative agenda, motion carries. Minutes of the previous regular meeting of July twenty ninth, twenty twenty four were read and approved, approved claims for payment. Motion by Rasmussen seconded by Cluse to receive the monthly revenue report for the Wright County Sheriff, motion carries. Motion by Rasmussen seconded by Cluse to approve the alcohol permit for Belmont Area Arts Council, motion carries. Adam Clemens, Wright County Engineer, gave an update on secondary roads. Blades were out blading routes and mowing granular road ditches. They are currently down one wing mower and is being, and it, and it is being repaired. Trucks continued to haul the twenty twenty four scheduled rock, scheduled gravel with eighty-four of one hundred twenty-two segments completed. The paving project on R thirty-three White Fox and C thirty-two has the main line completed. Uh, there was an issue towards the county line that will need to be fixed. In new business, Clemens discussed with the board about the Agribusiness Park wellhouse and weed control. The board would like secondary roads to put a fabric down prior to any rock to help prevent weeds in the future. Motion by Rasmussen seconded by Cluse during the meeting, motion carries. The Board of Supervisors met as Drainage District Trustees to view full minutes from the meeting, see the drainage district minutes.
You didn't do breakfast? You must have standing at food's you're at. Open forum for the public, anybody here or online wish to address the board?
Jeff Evans, Community Family Resources, just want to give an update, uh, the public an update of our services here in Webster City, uh, we're located at five hundred, uh, Fair Avenue, uh. Renovations to our building are done, so we are open to business now. Uh, we have mental health services here that are available every Thursday. Uh, we have a substance use disorder therapist that's here every Tuesday and Thursday. Tentatively, um, on September first, we will have sixteen beds open, uh, for full, uh, substance use recovery and residential. Um, currently, we have two open positions that we're looking to fill. Uh, one for a prevention specialist and the other is for a peer recovery coach. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the update. Anybody else wish to address the board?
Jeff, I had a question for you, uh.
Yes, sir.
Tuesdays and Thursdays, uh, are those appoint, by appointments only, or those are walk-ins, or?
No, those are walk-ins.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, claims have been around, um, review and act on twenty-eight E agreement with the city of Dallas law enforcement. We do that every year. I don't think there's any changes, do you look at it also?
Uh, Betty and I reviewed it and, uh, there was no change in the price. This is a twenty-eighty agreement between the, uh, Sheriff's Department and the city of Dallas to provide law enforcement for them.
A total of twenty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars.
Correct.
It looks like the mayor has already signed it to the city of Dallas.
Well, the motion to approve it, so move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Peggy. Yes. Wright County Treasurer, assignment of two county held tax remittances.
Yeah, I have, uh, city of Belmont is interested in taking over, because it's the city, they can take over the public bidder. Dance on these two certificates and it's the Parker Elementary.
Oh, good.
And the little lot that goes next to it. So what I'm, but.
Uh, can you explain that a little further? So somebody from the city had already paid those taxes and now, no?
No, no, the taxes are still owing, there's still, um, with penalties and interest, there's about thirty-three thousand on the big building.
Good.
Almost sixteen of that is city special assessments for the city of Belmont.
Got you.
So they want to.
Assume those.
They want, well, they want to take our stance as the public bidder.
Got you.
Uh, tax sale holder.
Then they'll take it, keep it in their name, clean it up?
Well, yeah, they'll do the ninety day notices and, um, when that's done, then they'll.
Okay.
So then our, our hands are worse of it, or they're gonna pay, the, they're gonna bring the taxes up today?
As a city, they don't have to.
Okay.
Yeah, it's kind of like the county, if they, if they would take our position, so like if the county wanted to take D to it, they could.
Good.
The city can too.
Okay.
So, um.
It clearly, no, no one's buying the tax certificates on those, is there anybody?
No, I wouldn't, no.
Yeah, I mean, so it's gonna, it's just gonna stay in the system.
But rather than it being our obligation, it's now the city's obligation.
Yeah, and I think they've got a lot of future plans that are gonna.
Okay.
Be great for them.
Great.
So I have two, but there's two certificates.
Okay. For that property?
And the little one next to it, there's my Nancy live.
Hmm.
Motion to approve, is there a second? Sorry. Any further discussion?
About the numbers?
Yeah, please.
Uh, it is, shoot, hold on, I get it. Twenty-one, it's twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one, five hundreds.
Okay.
And twenty twenty-two, twenty-two, five hundred.
Okay, so a first and a second on that, any further discussion? And the total amount was?
Uh, well, for the, the big one, thirty-two thousand, nine seventy-nine, twenty-six. And for the little one, four hundred even.
Okay.
Thirty-two, nine seventy-nine, twenty-six?
Thirty-two, nine seventy-nine, twenty-six.
Okay, and the twenty twenty-one certificate number was twenty, twenty-one, five hundred? Twenty-one, five hundred and twenty-five hundred?
Twenty-two, five hundred.
Yep, and the second one was four hundred dollars even. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Perfect, thank you.
Two more off. Be good for Belmont to get that cleaned up.
Be great, yeah.
Hey, item seven, Adams, Adam, uh, consider, uh, twenty twenty-four standing snow fence policy.
Good, so every year on August first, we, uh, look at what the cash price is from the local co-ops. Uh, I have a copy of that in front of you, um, so the local co-op prices twenty, twenty twenty-four prices, three dollars and sixty-eight cents. Um, and then we always tack on, uh, two dollars per bushel, uh, just like the DOT does. Um, so that would be five dollars and sixty-eight, uh, cents per bushel, or five dollars, yeah, five dollars sixty-eight cents per bushel. Um, the other, the other conversation we need to have is, well, one, do you want to leave it at that? Two, um, I also add, um, gave you guys the twenty twenty-three corn, county corn estimates, the yields. Uh, in, in Wright County, for Wright County is two hundred and two point five average last year, is kind of what we go off of.
Okay.
Um, and then I, uh, two oh one was the state average, so I think we normally try to get the one of, one of the two of the higher ones there. I was gonna put it at two oh three if that was everybody's okay with that.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so I would write that in, um, any conversations on price? Obviously, um, we, we've seen this price go down dra- drastically, lost.
I, I think that that's been the formula that we use, and so I think that we stick with it.
I'm, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, and the state hasn't changed theirs, to my knowledge.
Don't believe so.
Um, and then, uh, refresh my memory, this, now the county goes out to those, uh, landowners or tenants, I assume, and then say, this is an area, we have an issue, we would like to, like for you to participate in.
Yep, yep, we're gonna try to go out to the ones that we did two years ago, e- especially because those were corn. Um, last year, a lot of those got turned into beans, we really couldn't do anything.
Right.
Um, and we built snow fences, you know, actual snow, snow fence. So we'll go back out to them and talk to them again, um, it does state in there, uh, minimum of six rows up to twenty-four. Um, we have seen the benefit, I obviously, Highway three sees the benefit of it.
Yes.
Um, so it's something we want to reach out to people. Now, if I start having issues of saying, uh, farmers coming back and saying, hey, five dollars sixty-eight cents is just not enough for me to do it, then I'll have that conversation with you again, but.
I'll sell you my whole crop for that.
I, I bet you would, I bet you would. So we've kept an eye on the, uh, Marcus's, uh, for the last month, because Marcus looked it up real quick for me and he's right on what cash price is for October, so, um. But yeah, just needed a motion to approve of this.
Uh, most to approve the, uh, Wright County Secondary Road Standing Corn Snow Fence Policy.
Sorry, and that's for two, uh, two dollar premium base?
That's correct, at a base price of three dollars and sixty-eight cents with a two dollar premium paid on top of that for a total of five dollars and sixty-eight cents per bushel, based on the Wright County average of, uh, two hundred and three bushels per acre.
Okay. A second, your second number?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Yes.
There? It's your test.
Uh, next item on the agenda is the discussion of the pump houses out at the Agribusiness Park. Um, we, we went out and, uh, did the weed whacking, uh, for you guys, but then we also discussed a little bit last week of doing some landscaping out there. I have a post map of what we looked at, um. Uh, doing, we were, we're going to just do around the pump house and then around the generator, but then there would have left strips of grass between it, so I had Nate and the guys, uh, redo the estimate, um, of the area, and you can see on the, probably your second to last page on the back.
Yep.
Um, a total of seven thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars and sixty-six cents, um, would be our estimate. We're using fabric that we got from ADS, uh, sixteen foot wide, two rolls, which should be able to suffice this, um, one inch clean rock from, uh, Grand George.
Okay.
Or Humboldt, one of two.
You'll keep the maintenance on that so much easier.
I, it squares it off, a- and the farmer that, that mows around it, um, when they mow, they won't have to zigzag and we won't have to worry, one, we don't have to worry about them hitting the generator, or the, or the wellheads.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but just need kind of a, I, I didn't want you guys to make an approval on this or anything like that, but just discussion, if you want me to proceed with this, we can do that.
Can we use the, uh, uh, dollars from the, uh, there's funny, out there? I think we should go ahead and, and do it, that way it cleans it up out there, it's gonna save the mowing it every two weeks or three weeks out there, so.
I would agree.
Okay, is there a motion?
Don't move.
Uh, if you want a motion, let's put it on the agenda for next week, as a motion.
Okay.
So, just so you're doing that right.
Okay.
I just said, I did this, that, because I didn't wanna, we'll put it on the agenda next week for, consider. Uh, next item on the agenda is the, uh, update, uh, guys were out blading, um, and mowing. Last week, we did have, uh, kind of a smaller crew last week, uh, as the state fair started going on, so we have some guys that lead for that. Um, tractor hauling grain program, they did, uh, get a little bit more, so a hundred and eight out of one twenty-two um, on the scheduled gravel, uh, zone one is sixty percent done on, um, mowing, uh, fifty and a hundred percent on zone two and three again. Eight work orders were completed, um, you're gonna start seeing us around the county a little bit more right now, we're shifting our focus to concrete patching. So concrete patching on, we did Nelson, um, also, we're looking at doing radiuses, so you'll, you'll probably see it the most is um, the radius at C seventy and R thirty-eight for, uh, vehicles turning northbound. We're going to extend that like we did the Hammers Corner.
Yes.
Um, one, so that it's not such a drop off.
Yeah.
Um, as we look into doing that. Um, we'll look at eventually, hopefully, doing CBD four, um, corners to sixty-nine. Um, but, and then also extending some of these areas that the radius where they drop off their back tire and are still hitting, so we're gonna extend that another ten to fifteen feet.
You just do that off the Lake Canadian roads?
Yeah, yeah.
Nice.
Yep, so, and we had already done that prior, and we're still seeing people drop offs, we, we did it again, so, um, it does.
Is there a minimum amount that you can go?
Nope, not really, I mean, it's, it's just where they're driving and how they're, how they're taking it.
Yep.
Um, you know, truck drivers with their lo- their long back tires on the, are the ones dropping them off. Um, so we're gonna try to prevent any damage that happens to the roadways by doing that.
Very good.
Um, so yeah, you'll see us doing that, we have a lot of patching to do down on C seventy, so that'll be, but we'll use our lights and, uh, can get that done quickly. Um, next item was the construction update, um, I, Marcus just called me this morning, it, it has been painted, so uh, R thirty-three, C thirty-two have been completed, shouldering, um, and painted, and rumble strips cut, so. If you get a chance to take a drive on them, not too bad.
On C seventy, um, all of those, uh, blowups that I see happen, happened on the, in the saw cuts rather than in the expansion joints. When we engineer one of those roads in the future, do we need to have more expansion joints, or that impacts the cost of having it done, or?
No, um, there was a choice made by the, uh, I would just say, uh, that when we do, do a project like that again, that we choose not to delete the, um, uh, crack ceiling right when it's done.
Okay.
So remember a couple, few years ago, I had to put together like three years of, uh, maintenance.
I do.
To do that.
Yeah.
That's because it was never done in the first place.
Okay.
So for the longest time.
Those cracks need to be sealed when they fill up, then it allows, when it expands, it blows up.
Well, the water gets down in there.
Okay.
The water gets down in there and it freezes, or it steams, that's why you see, it steams, seems to be the worst, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it steams and it boils, and it boils.
Okay.
So we were trying to prevent the water get in in there, so now we're chasing that a little bit.
Okay. So, will we crack seal that?
Yes, we, we, we will go, crack seal, meaning, we've cracked sealed the entire thing already once.
Okay.
So, e- east-west.
Okay.
Both ways, that was three years of projects with the crack ceiling. Um, when we go to put back our concrete patches, we will crack seal around it, we have a crack, our cold flow. So we'll come back out and they'll recut, uh, a joint and then.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Is that the new machine, the coke, well, the new?
No, no, that's Durapatcher, so we're still waiting on the company to come up and train us on that. So we're gonna use that a lot on South County K for some of these areas.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. The other, that's all I got, thank you.
Any old business, uh, new business update on meetings, John?
I had nothing.
And I didn't have any meetings, I was.
I had a de-cap and we just kind of continue to, to, to sit out there waiting for funding. Um, we're finishing up, uh, all the dollars we've got for mental health and schools and, uh, some other programs, but until we get dollars, yeah, we'll do an emergency meeting once we figure out the allocations, but it's just kind of on hold right now.
Do you think it'll remain under control as it currently is, or do you think the state?
It's, it's, it's near, this next, this, this next year is gonna be the, the telling point if. It's work out, so. I, I, I would think it would, at some point, can still be around.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anything else for the board? Not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, we'll be back in session at nine forty-five with the, uh, Drainage Trustees.
Assume, thanks.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That has hurt. Okay, we're back and we'll go in, uh, call our meeting to order for, uh, Wright County Drainage Trustees. And first on the agenda is we have approval of the drainage claims, we have nine of those, Courtney?
Yes.
And they're going around for review right now? And we discussed those last week?
Yes, those were the invoices from last week, so we discussed any concerns or anything last week, and nothing new has come up on those, so.
Most to approve the nine drainage claims from, that were presented last week.
Sorry, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed, we need to sign these or not?
Sign them, and if you can put them on the bench for Joan.
Sure.
Minutes from last week, Courtney?
All right. So bear with me, they are a little long, um, but this is for everything. Uh, so the Wright County Board Supervisor met in regular session as trustees of the Drainage Districts with the following members present, Rick Rasmussen, Dean Cluse, Carl Hugable, also present were Betty Ellis, Auditor, and Courtney Morris, Strange Administrator. Other interested parties present, Doris Hoppfoss and Lynn Lukes. Motion by Cluse and seconded by Rasmussen to call the meeting to order, motion carried. There were no claims needing approval, minutes of the previous meeting for Joint Drainage District one hundred dash two on July twenty-ninth were read and approved. There were no work orders needing approval. Morris presented the following nine drainage invoices. Um, Aaron's Brothers Piling for seven hundred sixty-nine dollars, Wright County Auditor for three dollars and forty-five cents. And then the remaining, uh, invoice was worked for Joe Hera for the Russian weed control. Um, four thousand, seven hundred dollars, two thousand, three hundred fifty dollars, one thousand, three hundred fifty dollars, three thousand, six hundred fifty dollars, five hundred dollars, seven hundred dollars, and four hundred and fifty dollars.
Can we just send them out there in case she comes down?
Yes, please. Uh, Morris explained that the invoices from Joe Hera were first invoices for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Russian weed control service contract. There were a few issues with the original invoices, which were corrected by Hera and resubmitted. All drainage invoices were approved and signed. Morris provided an update that all time surveys are uploaded to the county website and progress continues on the land surveys. A request has been received to have the land surveys uploaded in a timely manner for a company doing research. The pipeline resolution has been built in GeoPermits and is pending review by GeoPermit staff. A conference call with Franklin County Trustees began at ten a.m. to discuss the open ditch on a previous cleanout and concerns about the bench or firm of the ditch. Uh, present on conference call were Franklin County Supervisors, Richard Lukensmeyer, Chris Van Ness, and Gary McVicker. Katie Flint, the Auditor, Colette Brunns, the Drainage Lead, and Roy and Jean Arons, the Landowners. Motion by Franklin County, Richard Lukensmeyer, seconded by Wright County Dean Cluse to convene meeting as Drainage District, Drainage, or District Trustees on Joint Drainage District one eighteen dash four, all ayes, motion carried. Cluse shared his concern about the power lines between the field and the ditch. Aaron stated that the area between the ditch and his field is currently in CRP. He would like this area to be as it was prior to the cleanout, which would allow him to farm up to and past the power poles. Currently, it is hard to even farm up to the power poles, according to Aaron's. Cluse stated that he has no problem with the landowner leveling the top of the ditch down to the bench, provided it slopes away from the ditch. It was discussed that surveyed, surface drain may need to be extended. Morris asked if the slope was excessive and could be lowered, Cluse responded, yes. Further discussion was had with the conclusion that something will be written up as an agreement to do nothing now as the landowner is entering the land into CRP again, and when CRP is no longer available, the land will be farmed. And the slope would then need to be leveled down to accommodate farming. Discussion with Franklin County then began on the memorandum of understanding to establish procedures in regards to joint drainage districts repair work authorizing county trustees to do repairs up to fifteen thousand. Motion by Franklin County Gary McVicker, seconded by Wright County Carl Hugable to approve the memorandum of understanding with Franklin County to establish procedures in regards to joint drainage districts repair work authorizing county trustees to do repairs up, up to fifteen thousand. All ayes, motion carried. Motion by Franklin County, Richard Lukensmeyer, seconded by Wright County Carl Hugable to adjourn the joint meeting, all ayes, motion carried. Morris and Cluse provided an update on DD thirty-six railroad repair correspondence with Dave Johnson, Drainage Attorney. Morris stated that she had not received a response from numerous phone calls and emails to Dave Johnson in an attempt to get an update. Cluse was able to get in touch with Dave Johnson prior to the meeting. Johnson has not received any correspondence from our contact, Phil Pat McGill, with the railroad since January. He will be having the notice served to Pat McGill within the next couple of weeks. Motion by Cluse and seconded by Hugable to adjourn the meeting, motion carried.
The only thing that I would add to those minutes is, uh, it kind of leaves us, and I know that that the understanding would come when you read today's minutes, but, um, uh, when we were talking about the Arons and the ditch, um, we left the meeting with Franklin County as the lead was going to contact their drainage attorney to have a, uh, document prepared concerning, um.
Leveling, leveling that ground out.
Turning the level of the ground at a future date.
Yeah, after it can no longer be in CRP, whatever it was.
But with the additional of those notes, I would, uh, move to approve the minutes.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Hey, review and act on drainage work order, I see one in front of us right now, it looks like it was in your area, Rick.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
From, uh, Three M Farms, looks like it is a, a washout, and the contractor will be Mazdam.
Correct. The landowner did state that, uh, Mazdam is already aware of the issue, so he was just following through with doing the actual work order.
Was it a washout of a surface intake?
Um, yes, there was some area of some private tile that was handled by them earlier, uh, on their own, uh, to, to the south. And because of that issue, um, not from the repair that was done to that issue, but the initial issue, um, there caused some washout underneath where that, um, tile outlets into the ditch.
Okay.
So.
Okay. Motion, motion to approve that repair, okay, second, right?
Sorry.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Do I sign this sheet at all, or do we just go on the record?
No, it's just, Rick has the original, but I need back.
Okay, perfect. Aaron fourteen, we've been signing any open drainage invoices, we have none, so act on them. And then, uh, we'll have a ten o'clock, uh, conference call with Franklin regards to Joint Drainage District one eighteen dash four. So we will be in recess until ten o'clock.
Can you increase the volume?
Yeah.
Hey, change the camera a little.
I was just. I was just gonna flip them off too, put it back on it.
No, no.
No, okay.
They can say it's.
Wright County today, anything exciting?
Uh, no, nothing at all.
Who's present on your side?
Uh, all three supervisors are president, uh, plus, uh, Katie. Um, do you have any, any attendees?
No, just our Drainage Attorney.
Okay.
Is that Colette there?
Yes, Colette, certainly.
Still have about a minute left, I'd say.
So we have, uh, the three supervisors, uh, Cluse Hugable, uh, Rasmussen, Auditor Ellis, um, Drainage Administrator Courtney, um, Engineer Adam Clemens, Conservation Director Eric Richter, and, uh, Supervisor-elect Lute.
We'll go ahead and let you guys start whenever you're ready.
Yeah, we're ready.
Okay, it's a little early, go, go ahead and call the meeting to order for the joint, uh, for, dash, one, eight, to the joint, uh, district for Wright County and Tracca County, uh, certain motion to, certain trustees, Drainage Trustees, we, Lucet Smire moved.
Second, Cluse.
Cluse seconded. All in favor?
Aye. All, all ayes, Wright County.
All ayes, Wright. Hey, we have Art here, he wants to, just some clarity on what we're looking at for this, we're, we're talking a lot about this. Roy's, when they, they had to bench down on this ditch, and even so, there's been all the material moved and and right now, it's moved up the side of the ditch.
Yeah.
So it's kind of shoulder now.
So it's kind of shoulder now with ground paw. His, his concern is that, you know, that they can keep it into the like CRP program, but it's not that concerned about it, but it's not as important. But he's just wondering if you can get something in right, even that if you had this, then it could be leveled off. That district, that, that district expense for making more teeth. So, so dirt that was removed from the ditch is now piled on both sides of the venture. It's not just for one side, and that's on his ground yet. How high is it?
Well, it's benched down probably, uh, I would say eight to ten feet. So essentially that moves the high point of the ditch further to the south, uh, allowing access for a long reach, uh, trackhoe to be able to reach the bottom of the ditch. As it was originally constructed, a long reach backhoe or trackhoe, excuse me, was not able to reach the ditch for cleanout.
So if you didn't put it, if you, if you didn't build this bank, you, what would you have done? Just smoothed it out, uh, to the adjoining land?
Correct. That's what, that's what we would do, um, to make it so that it is, uh, so that the bench would have es- essentially disappear and the top edge of the bank uh, would be at its, at the bench level as it is right now. So it would constitute moving that dirt to the south, uh, and feathering it out.
And then he made that in my email from Colette, it says, he refers, there's reference to power poles. Where are those located?
Yes, sir, they're located along the south, uh, south side of the ditch.
Um, they're not. Are they south of the, of the, of the, of the bench or what?
They are, uh, probably, I would estimate ten feet south of the bit, of the top of the bench. Um, but that dirt, when the bench was created, was piled higher on the poles, so, so effectively you could feather that dirt away from the poles and not affect them in any way. And that, that, uh, power system is owned by, uh, Prairie Energy, so, or the, the REC is whose line that is.
And then there's a reference about a surface drain, uh, that might, that this might affect. You'll have to, I think, if they further the, the soils out further south, then they'll have to extend uh, maybe one or two of the surface drains out, out.
Yeah.
You know, but the surface, because it'll have dirt, you know, dirt will be pushed, soil will be pushed out over the top.
You have to raise the surface drain.
You have to just extend it. Raise it, but extend it out.
Okay.
But basically what we'd want is an agreement is drainage district will pick up the cost if he ever, if he ever wants to down the road.
Yeah.
Is that the board's, board's feeling that they want to do this?
That is correct. The landowner, uh, was president at the previous meeting and he stated that his desire was to keep it in CRP, but his concern was if the CRP program was ever eliminated, because that's a federal government program, uh, then he would want to be able to crop it. And currently, he cannot crop it.
Okay, so the, the dirt, the lay of the land's gotta be put, you know, back, or I don't know back, but it's gotta be things fallible.
Right, it's got, that, that excess dirt would need to be feathered out into the field.
Any idea what the cost would be to do all this if it becomes?
We, we don't know, cause it's gonna be down the road.
Right, well, if you haven't done, uh, I don't know if you guys would have an idea, we could ask our drainage.
Yeah, you can't say what it's gonna be down the road.
Yeah.
I, I'm, I guess the only basis that I would have to go by would be to look at the, the cost that was paid to Myers in order to create the bench, um, and I would, you know, assume that it would cost that same amount at least or higher, depending on how many years down the road. But regardless of the cost, what the landowner's looking for is that the drainage, uh, the drainage district would be responsible for returning his land to a proper, um, elevation, if you will.
Okay. After the CRP program ceases.
Right.
Is, is, is that the only contingency? So if, if the CRP program terminates, then you would be under an obligation to do it for some no other reason. The cost, they, they pay on the CRP program. You know, it could, they could still offer it, but if it's an unreasonable rate, you know, he may not want to sign up either, you know.
Correct.
Cause you're binding other landowners after again too.
That is correct. I mean, to re- to re- that would be the other contingency is if the landowner decided to sell and the new owner said, wait a minute, there's this agreement out here that says that the drainage ditch, drainage district will return this um, to a farmable condition.
Right, so it's, it's, it, if I'm hearing this right, the contingency would be if uh, CRP program terminates, or if the landowner does not renew a CRP contract.
Correct.
Right?
Yeah.
Correct.
That helps me. I can put something together for you guys to look at then. But not any other questions there were.
Not, not from Wright County.
Okay. Uh, anything else?
No, I, I've got it. Thank you.
We'll, uh, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, adjourn this joint session.
Don't move, right.
That was Rasmussen from Wright County. Okay.
All in favor, signify by aye.
All eyes Wright County.
You guys have a good day.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I need to read the description, Colette.
Okay, uh, put us down to item sixteen. We'll motion to adjourn our, uh, drainage trustee meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we're adjourned and we will meet later on here for a work session with Conservation and Secondary Roads to discuss, uh, roadside vegetation. For now, we will be adjourned.